Good morning. Good morning, everyone. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for February the 7th. Councilmember Duff is excused this morning. We also have Assistant City Clerk Agnes Goodwin filling in today. Agnes, good to have you with us. The first item on the agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for our February 11th regular council meeting. So, council, please refer to that document. As is usual, the first several items are liquor license applications. Item four is various purchase contracts. Mr. Thompson?
I have several questions on, in four, but specifically on 4D, the dollar limit increase for replacement of the AVL. We talked about this, I think, back probably three years ago or so when we had those to the solid waste vehicles. And it was, at the time, it was sort of to track the solid waste vehicles, I think, through the subdivisions and so forth because we had had an accident. So, what are we doing now? Adding, are we just adding more so we can monitor more of our vehicles? Just kind of curious what that is. Because it seems kind of like a, kind of Big Brother-ish.
It's the employer monitoring where our vehicles are being used and the efficiency of their use. It actually creates great transparency in how we use our equipment and where our crews are. In Environmental Services, it does help us with the efficiency and making sure the routes are being, and be able to track those and evaluate the efficiency of those. But we found it to be a very important tool just to make sure that our crews are where they need to be and that they're assigned to the right location, so.
Well, my concern with that is that people have a tendency, because they use this same type of data in my previous life, and I found that, or we found that supervisors were using this more as a supervisory tool to oversee their crews out in the field versus doing field visits. And I want to make sure that we're not, you know, like, sitting in the office watching where our crews are at or where our employees are at and not, you know, supervising by the chair versus supervising with their feet and getting out and watching their crews or watching the employees and doing those field visits and.
We can check on that. I'm not aware that that's how it's being used. I think it's being used if there's sometimes questions from customers about the service or about whether or not somebody came out, or even if there's a question about whether crews were at a location getting the work done, it does help keep that accountability and transparency.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're not using it for, you know, the old spying on employees and so forth. So, if we're using it for good things, for efficiency and making sure that, you know, our routing vehicles and stuff like that, I'm cool with it. But if we're just doing it to supervise employees from a desktop, then I'm not good with this.
Safety component, we always, if there ever is an issue out in the field, we always know where our employees are should we need to respond, so.
Thank you. Other questions on Agenda Item Four?
On Item 4E, and this is probably more for Chief, but we're, you know, from the fire apparatus side, I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, we've been, it appears we've been purchasing from peers for, you know, for almost 30 years or over 20 years. I just want to make sure that we don't get into a situation where the vendor's holding the city hostage in the event that there's other parts or apparatus that are more cost-effective or least costly for our citizens to purchase. And I know that standardization's a big thing, but if there's something out there that's cheaper, more efficient, and more cost-effective, then we should be looking at that from that angle as well. So, it kind of, you know, when we start sole sourcing, when there's other vendors out there, I get a little concerned on that.
Thank you. Representative from the Fire Department.
Good morning. I'm not, Chief Camilli, she's not in. We do have, this is our final renewal on that contract, and we do plan on going out for RFP after that and reviewing everything, all the other options.
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions on?
Can I add?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Thompson, too, and we also, if we're still doing it, we do apparatus repair for other agencies, our communities, so like Gilbert Fire and some of the others, if we're still doing, I don't know if we are, Mr. Brady, but some of the other outlying communities because they don't have the resources with Fleet Services, so, and their apparatus is Pierce as well, so it's kind of a.
Hopefully, they're buying the tools and parts and apparatus and not us.
Yeah. Well, they do. And then, there's an RFP process for it all, so a little bid typically takes the service.
One last question. On Item 4G, what is the, what exactly are we doing with these cameras? Are we, are these the cameras that we're using to monitor the intersections and so forth?
Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, good morning. This is one type of camera that we use. These are at the intersections. This specifically is a fisheye camera that allows us to see 360 degrees. We have more cylindrical cameras that you can picture on top of the mast arms. We also have pan tilt zoom cameras, but this is used for vehicle detection to help manage flow through our intersections.
Well, the sole sourcing on this, because I, you know, and this is what kind of caught my eye, was that there's, if it's strictly to monitor intersections and monitor traffic flow and adjust traffic flow, I think there's other, I know that there's other vendors out there that do this sort of the same thing, maybe not using a camera system, but I know they, there's, you know, Live Traffic Data, for example, has a box that they can plug into your cabinet, and they can monitor traffic lanes and adjust your lights automatically or send warnings out to traffic, your traffic control center. And so, you know, when you start sole sourcing, I was looking at this saying, okay, what exactly are we looking at? Are we just using it for the camera aspect, or are we trying to monitor the traffic flow and adjust traffic flow patterns? Because there's other data, or there's other vendors out there that provide the same thing, and I just want to make sure that we're not locked into something that we're, that's going to cost us quite a bit, you know, $137,000 annually with a 5% increase when there's other vendors out there that may provide the same thing at a cheaper price. But if it's, if we're after the camera system, then I'm cool with that. I just want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're using it accordingly.
Mayor, Councilmember, we use the cameras both to detect as well as to see, if that makes sense. You know, you've been to our traffic management center, so we have a visual eye on all of our intersections, but the technology also uses it. For example, if a car pulls into a left turn lane, you know, so that it's not activating the left turn arrow if a vehicle is not there. I'd have to get you a count on how many intersections we use this particular camera at. I believe it's a minority of the intersections. Typically, we use loop detection in the pavement, but we also have a camera, you know, so that we can see it. So, it really depends on the situation. As noted in the council report, this is helpful at intersections where there's construction going on, where lanes get shifted, or the mast arms get taken down, you know, during construction. So, it's one tool of a number of tools we use to manage traffic flow in the city.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Luna?
No, oh, I was going to go five.
Oh, okay. Any other questions on Item Four?
I got 4H.
Yes.
Is, on the water meters, is this the idea on doing digital meters? And is this part of that movement forward, or what is this?
So, the automated meter systems is something we're continuing to work on, but these will be compatible with that technology in the future if we need to mount that on here to make that available. But we just on a regular basis have to continue to really place meters because they do start slowing down, is the right word?
Losing accuracy.
Losing is accuracy, usually, meaning less flow. So, by replacing these, we can get more accurate. But we are buying them so that they have, they can be attached with the digital reader that would then become part of a larger automated system.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions on Agenda Item Four? If not, Mr. Luna?
Yeah, I was going to ask Corinne on 5D if she could explain why we've revised the Falcon Field Master Ten at lease?
Good morning, Mayor, Councilmembers. This item is a request to approve a revised template to the Master Ten at lease that we use at Falcon Field Airport for all of our long-term ground leases. There's been a Master Ten at lease in place since the late, at least since the late 1990s, but over time, changes need to be made, whether it's through, you know, procedural or policy decisions. The last update occurred in October 2007, which the council did approve, and this update will now revise that template. Couple of the things that we felt were important to include in the template update is a reference to the voluntary noise abatement program, which is also known as the fly-friendly program, to try to encourage our tenants to be very sensitive to our community as they are flying, taking off, and landing at the airport. Also, we include in it the airport planned area design development standards, which were incorporated after 2007. That is something that council also approved back in 2011, so that any architectural improvements would be consistent with what council has approved. So, those are just a few of the updates, and I'll be happy to address any questions that you may have.
Corinne, were there any FAA requirements related to this?
Yes, there are several FAA requirements in the document and which also exist in the previous documents, and all of that is tied back to the fact that the city receives federal funding for some of its capital improvement projects. And as a condition of receiving that funding, the city is required to comply with certain requirements of the FAA. One of them in particular is that the airport land, unless otherwise designated by the FAA and the city, must be used for an aeronautical use. And so, we are somewhat restricted on what we can actually use the land for at the airport.
Thank you, Corinne.
Thank you. Other questions on? Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. Other council members here, I sent out an invitation if you want to learn more about irrigation water delivery districts. So, 5B and C on our council agenda is about water delivery districts and what they mean to, most of our council districts have these or could be implemented. And I believe Kathy McDonald, is Kathy the point of contact for that? Hi, Kathy. I don't know if there's any pushback or anything from any of the neighborhoods, but just an invitation for you to learn a little bit about it, just a short briefing, probably about 30 minutes, SRP's willing to come over and give you a briefing on it and how it works and the process. So, if you're interested, you'll receive that invitation. But these are great ways for neighborhoods to manage their irrigation water supply and develop a plan to pay for them for any infrastructure improvements, because some of the systems are probably close to 100 years old, and they're breaking down in some of the areas. So, instead of one homeowner to, or several to bear the cost, it can be collectively done by every parcel holder in the irrigation district. So, just an opportunity for us to learn a little bit more about that, so that invitation will be sent to you. Finally, the Maricopa County Board of Supervisors are the final jurisdiction on that. They're the ones that okay that, and then the taxation component's done by the county. So, we're just the first part of the process, and we have no regulatory control other than moving it forward. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You know, we did at one of our last council meeting, the Evergreen District, which is the neighborhood I grew up in, it was, I found it fascinating for the situation you described, where you have literally 100-year-old underground flood irrigation infrastructure that is wearing out, and you'd have to either rally the community together to figure out what are we going to do to resurrect this system that's really part of the neighborhood, you know, which we have these huge trees and the lush landscaping is because of this great amenity. Is that what we're doing here?
Yes.
Same thing.
We usually have not had a lot of difficulties because it's petitioned by the.
Residents.
Residents to do it. So, in that case, I think there were just a few that were concerned, but we've approved dozens of these over time, so.
We aren't aware of any opposition on these two, we think.
All right.
You are aware?
No, we are aware that there's any opposition on these two. We kind of did some outreach, and we don't think so.
All right.
There's one.
Oh, okay. We never know.
Yeah.
Well, it probably would be good to learn more about that. Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Other questions or comments regarding our agenda for Monday? Okay. If not, the next item on our agenda for today is Item Two, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed five-year implementation plan and schedule for the 2018 general bond obligation bond projects for parks and recreation, cultural and public safety. Scott, good to have you with us.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. You'll recall at the start of the summer when the project, this was being finalized for the proposed 2018 bond authorization, we told you at that time that we would come back following the election to walk through an implementation plan and schedule, so we're going to review that today. First, some of the factors that went into trying to plan out these projects is that a bond authorization is a multi-year bond program. The project lifecycle can take several years, and they are planned accordingly. Some of the projects are of a complex nature, and they take some time to work through the process. Also, we have to be responsive to the priorities and needs of the city, various influences that impact when projects need to be completed. Next is, we have to balance the engineering workload. This has to do with our ability to complete projects. We want to plan them so that we can work through the process successfully with the engineering department. And then, lastly, we have to consider the available funding to be able to support the operations and maintenance. Some of these projects are, can be personnel-heavy, say, for example, with fire stations, and we have to be able to plan the timing of those so that they can be successful when they're implemented. As I go through this schedule, just a reminder that these are estimated, there's a lot of things that can go into the timeline that, when projects are completed. Also, some projects, some projects don't start July 1st. They start, they may pick up later in the year. Some of the phases are completed in a timely fashion, and we can move on to the next phase, and some things we have to work through the process a little bit longer. So, what I've done is tried to give a picture by fiscal year of these projects as they move through the process. Included in the Agenda Item today is a schedule that's a little bit more detailed that you can certainly review and can give you specific details. The land acquisition is an early phase. These projects are already underway in terms of land acquisition. That process can sometimes take some time, and so we've started on those in order to move through that process. That includes the projects you see there, the fire station in the Eastmark area, the athletic fields that are at Monterey Park and North Center, and then the northeast Public Safety Facility, which is the joint facility with the police substation and the fire station in the northeast area. In terms of design, these are the projects that we have started to design, the city center plaza in order to maintain the pace with the ASU project. The Public Safety Communication Fiber, this is the project to close some of the loops with communication fiber, the most critical being the downtown portion. We're able to design all of those segments now, and then over the next several years, we can complete construction in conjunction with projects that are taking place in the area. For example, Mesa Drive Phase Two, there's some fiber that's going in that road, and as that project starts construction here shortly, then we can complete the segments that are part of that project. The two libraries.
Excuse me, Scott, on, just the subject of fiber and all that, it seems like in the past, we've always run additional dark fiber, just anticipating that there might be a commercial use for that, or that, just, is that still our practice?
So, Mayor, we'll run additional conduit, not necessarily the fiber per se, so that then if a commercial user wants to come in.
They can pull.
They can rent the space out of our conduit in that area. So, that's typically what we've done, and so we'll look at the opportunities to do that. Anytime, and frankly, we'll do that just part of a street project sometimes, too. If we're in a commercial area, we'll go ahead and put conduit in for future opportunities, like we did on Southern Avenue, right? We did that, and that allowed us to, allowed others to pull fiber in for Santander and some of the businesses along there. But I think typically, we will, in this case, we're, we need to put fiber and conduit in, but we'll probably, most likely, it's pretty simple for us to add conduit with additional capacity in it as well.
Okay.
When engineering works through projects, they coordinate with IT to look at the segments that would be advantageous for us to put them in at the time.
Thank you.
In next fiscal year, we'll start design on the shared use paths, Lehigh Crossing being the priority there. And then, also, we'll start design on the athletic fields that are at Red Mountain Park, and then on the north side of Brown Road, the baseball and softball fields on, out there at Red Mountain as well. Moving into construction, again, that communication fiber for those segments that are appropriate, the library improvements, as well as fire station, the fire station in the Eastmark area will be under construction.
Scott. Mr. Luna?
Scott, will you be working with the IDM museum personnel relative to the design plan, and how is that going to, how's that going to take place?
Yes, we are working with them, engineering's working with them. The early design funding is to help them with some of those conceptual drawings. There is a, there is a component of some additional fundraising that they're working on with their partners, and this will help with that fundraising effort in terms of the conceptual drawings.
So, Mayor, Councilman Luna, what the, and working with the IDM museum staff, is the strategy is to have the conceptual design done early in the process, but then there's a gap where that allows them to take those designs with the pictures and do their fundraising part. But then the schedule for construction wouldn't start till, design would be 21, 22. So, there's kind of like, we're providing the funding for the design upfront, so they can kind of get some design, or conceptual design, help them with their fundraising, and but the schedule for the construction wouldn't be until about 21, 22, 22, 23 is when that would come about. And that's to give them time to do their fundraising.
And then fiscal year 2021, it will start, we'll start design on the northeast Public Safety Facility. Again, that's that joint facility. There'll be some continued design work on the ball fields. Signal Butte Park Phase Two design will begin, as well as design on the southeast Mesa Library. Again, some of those projects, they don't start design on July 1, they may start later in the year, and that's why you'll see them straddle a couple of years, and sometimes it'll feel like design or construction is taking longer than it would be, but that's based on estimated start times. In terms of construction, the federal building renovation will start construction, and you'll remember that we have funding from the 2018 authorization, and we still have some remaining funding from the 2012 authorization, and that combined funding will be used to complete that project. This year will also mark the completion of the fire station in the Eastmark area, as well as the city center plaza area. In fiscal year 2122, obviously, this is a few years down the road, so you'll start to see more projects under construction and fewer projects in the design phase. The design phase will include the athletic fields at Crisman and Elliott, the dog park at Countryside Park, the two parks that have been identified with Councilmember Heredia's assistance with Marblehead Mason, Pallaverdy Park, and then the police evidence facility that's on, proposed at North Center. In terms of construction, the Red Mountain Park fields should be completed in this year, more public safety fiber segments. The federal building renovations will continue, and then the athletic fields at Monterey Park are also under construction at that time. Fiscal year 2223, design will be completed on all the projects, and so for the last two years of the program, these projects will move through the construction phases. The southeast Mesa Library construction will be started in that fiscal year, and then the athletic fields, most of them will be completed at that time. And then, again, the police evidence facility will be moving through construction as well. The last fiscal year that's planned is 2324. These are the projects that will be completed in that fiscal year. It includes the police evidence facility, the southeast Mesa Library will be operational at that point, and that'll, that'll be the last year of construction activities.
Most likely, Scott, these are just wrapping up these projects, so it's probably not a full fiscal year.
Yes, they won't be a full fiscal year.
This is probably less than half a year. This is just completing projects.
One of the things that we didn't include in the schedule, just because of spacing on those slides, has to do with fire apparatus replacement. You'll recall that there was $24.7 million set aside. We work with the fire medical department, they have a multi-year replacement schedule that takes into account both mileage and years of service. These are replacement apparatus, not new, and this is a plan that they have, that they have in place. You'll see the scheduled apparatus, and they monitor those apparatuses as they move through the fiscal year.
So, this kind of dovetails on the conversation we just had, right? So, this is a good timing to relook and see about the manufacturer, the, of fire trucks that we're going to be purchasing in the future, because you have several here now beginning in this next year that would be purchasing over the next five years. So, that's good timing for that review.
And they do work to balance it so that there's not spikes in any year, but they plan them accordingly, so.
Mr. Brady, this might be, not all of us, or Mr. Freeman, and know what all of these pieces of equipment are, but, and I know that we're also making some moves to more SUV-type vehicles, and you know, can you update us a little bit on just the?
Sure.
This change in that?
Well, yeah. So, first of all, what you see here are the, we call, we refer to them as apparatus. So, they're very large. This is the pumper. Even larger, the ladder trucks, the specialized ladder trucks. You even see an ARF truck, that's not for the dog park, that's for the airports, and that's specifically associated with specialized piece of equipment to put out of the airports. So, I'm not sure if this ARF is Falcon Field or is it Gateway? Do we know? We don't know. So, it's one of the two. I'm trying to remember which one. I think, I want to say it's Falcon Field. Now, so, Mayor, the only, to be able to justify putting them into a bond program, they really have to be of substantial cost, which these are. And so, the pumpers, I'm not sure what we're at today as far as our costs.
650.
Yeah, and I think ladders are probably pushing.
1.2.
1.2, yeah. So, they're, okay, so the price keeps going up.
I was going to say, I think the, I think the.
Stop asking.
The pumpers are about 1.1, and the ladders are about 1.2.
So, the point is, these are substantial piece of equipment that'll last for a period of time, and so we will finance them through the bonds. Mayor, what you're referencing, as we've, I think the Fire Department will be, is rolling out a new staffing model, and to support that staffing model and to give us some flexibility and agility of deploying staff, we are looking at purchasing supersized pickups, for lack of a better word, and those will not be at the same, they're not going to be, you know, 3/4 of a million dollars or a million dollars, or much less than that. And that equipment will be financed out of the, most likely, out of the sales tax, and so they would, that would not be included in these kind of, the apparatus here. These apparatus are the very large pieces of equipment that we finance, and we try to reduce the financing period, not like we would for a building that may be 20 years. We try to reduce these into something, I don't know where we at, 10 or 10 and 12 years or something like that. So, the difference here, these are replacements of existing equipment, large pieces of equipment, very expensive pieces of equipment, but we will also be acquiring smaller pieces of equipment for those kind of medical response units that you've been hearing about. And but that will be, that won't be done in this program, it'll be done separately, we'll pay cash for those.
I think it's just good to point out that we're exploring those options, because the traditional model of, you roll up in a million-dollar piece of equipment for a fairly routine type of call, I think, we want people to know that we're shifting away from that to a cost-effective model, although we still have to have, when you need a ladder, you need a ladder, right?
Right. No. And that's the, you know, that, this is kind of demonstrates, if you look across the board here of this apparatus. here of this apparatus, the majority of it is, is equipment apparatus that's intended to fight those large events, whether it's fires or large, what's the word I'm looking for?
Rescues.
Yeah, rescues, but critical events, right, where you need the big piece of equipment. And that's important, because you always want to have that, and we're replacing what we have. But as we know, the majority of our calls are not that. They're the smaller medical unit calls, and so we're trying to scale and provide the right-size, right-fit equipment to respond to those at the same time, so.
Great, thank you. This is just another visual timeline to try to give you some perspective on when projects will be completed. Like we talked about, as far as working through the early phases, land acquisition, design, the program structure is such that the projects are completed through construction towards the end of the program, but you can see the parks projects illustrated there. And then on the next slide, we have the estimated completions for public safety and the cultural projects. You'll note that, again, fire apparatus is over those, those five years or four and a half years, and then our communication fiber, those are the segments that will be completed during that, during that timeline. We talked at the beginning about operations and maintenance. We separate operations and maintenance into ongoing and startup costs. Ongoing costs are those things that we know occur each year. They include personnel utilities. Startup costs are one-time purchases that we have to do in order to provide services. These can include things like computer equipment shelving, or in terms of parks, landscape mowers and equipment. This is the estimated schedule at this time, as far as O and M is concerned. One thing I did need to note is, if you looked at this earlier in the week, I found an error in the calculation for the public safety sales tax. Both fire stations, the personnel associated with those fire stations should have been included with the personal safety sales tax, but I only included one of them, and so I went back and made that adjustment to include both of them, and you'll see that reflected in the line at the bottom for public safety. Again, this is one of those things that you try to balance the timing of projects, because the impact can be significant. I included it out to '25, '26, because that's the first year where we're not introducing additional new O and M. So you'll, you'll see the impact once the projects are all completed.
So Mayor, Council, this becomes a significant factor in the timing of projects, not just the acquisition of land or the ability to design and construct, but also just the timing of, and the perspective when we're in those out years and we're doing budgeting about whether or not we are in a position to absorb the additional operations and maintenance costs in our budget. We've in the past delayed some projects when we've gone through slower times, recessions, to delay them until such time that the city recovered enough to be able to absorb those costs inside. So this is just, this is the best-case scenario, and these are additional funds above and beyond what we currently have today. So we will, you know, we, each year, as we sit down and do the budget, we'll begin including these costs as we anticipate those projects being completed and being delivered for services, and so we'll have to monitor those. You know, fire stations, police substations, libraries, pretty intense as far as personnel and staffing, so those are the ones we'll just continue to monitor. Obviously, on the public safety side, we're going to be fine, because we, with the public safety sales tax, we should be able to, you know, we'll be able to bring those up. The larger parks, especially when we include ball fields, and now we have maintenance obligations, and new libraries, we just have to be prepared and watch, and as we get ready to build those and open those up, that we make sure we have enough, we have the capacity within the budget to absorb those positions. So those will just be, future conversations we'll have as we start rolling these projects out. But right now, we're spending, we, this is just to kind of make, helps us internally to be aware of those cost impacts into the future, so we can anticipate those in our future forecast.
Mr. Thompson.
Chris, if there's a way, you know, I'd really like to see if we could shift Monterey Park, the timeline up a little bit on that. I know we've already acquired all the land, except for the one holdout there on the, that fronts Guadalupe. You know, that, that was one of the projects, as you were saying, that got deferred, you know, and we shifted a lot of those funds, well, pretty much all the funds, over to Pioneer Park and Greenfield Park to finish up in Councilmember Whitaker's area. You know, and that was from the 2014, I believe, park bond, and so, you know, seeing it pushed all the way out to the '22, '23 construction timeline, I mean, you know, that's, that's an eight, nine-year timeframe from the time that the citizens originally voted, you know, back in 2014. So if we can, if there's a way, we can push the Monterey Park up a little bit, and probably the police evidence facility as well. I know that one was, that's been a big deal for PD for, ever since I've been on council now, so for five years, you know, because they're running out of space. In fact, I, one of the selling points to Councilmember Fender at the time on us buying the, the old Mervyn's Building on Main was that we were going to use that as an evidence storage, and that never took place, and so PD is, you know, honestly, running out of, out of storage place, and they could use that evidence facility. So if we're able to bump that up a little bit in the timeline to accommodate them, that would, that would be good as well.
I think we've had those conversations, so I think this matches the need for when that bill, and you're right, it needs to, we need to have it. I think the evidence facility would, will still be able to accommodate us up to that point, so, but we'll keep, we'll keep watching for that. On Monterey Park, I think that's a fair point. I think we'll continue, we're already actively in discussions for the land, so I think if we can get that resolved earlier, then we'll just flow right into design, and we'll just keep moving along, and maybe we can get it done a little bit earlier in the year, but that, I don't think that would be a major issue.
And then on the, on the fire station, Chris, you know, we have, has Eastmark or DMB or Brookfield now, have they conveyed the property to us already?
We're in discussions with them. We've run into a few little hiccups with them. We will wait and come talk, ask your, maybe need your help a little bit later, but we are-
Is the fund, the funding source part is still there?
It's not funding, it's not-
Right, but it's just-
Staffing, it's, it's working out some particulars with DMB.
Let me know if I can help.
I, we will. Thank you.
So I know the, on the agenda is not a schedule for public safety staffing and hiring, but I think at some point, and obviously, when the, when the fire station is built, I expect by then we'll have the staff over, but-
Sure. Mayor, thank you for, so I think some of you have received some briefings from fire on their new model, so that kind of, we wanted to make sure we kind of were, everybody was on board with that, and I think what we'll do is we'll start, and then we're going to start working with the police staffing model immediately now. We have some meetings on that. So we want to make sure we have a good staffing model. We don't want to just assume we're going to keep doing the things the way we're doing it, and fire's proven that point. Working, you know, the chief's office has done amazing things with the data. Our data scientists were a great resource, right, to help them kind of look at how things were taking place and the dynamics of staffing, and making sure we take care of firefighter well-being. So we're now moving, and so that's in play. So we could probably, we can give you a lot more information there. We have the two fire stations coming up. We know what it takes to staff those. And now we're going to do the same thing on, on police. So give us some time, and we're going to work on a staffing model for police, and then we'll come back with that schedule also. But yeah, I think fire's probably pretty set, and now we're going to work on PD. But we will, at some point, bring you a staffing model for everything, kind of show you the, at least for the next, whatever, five or six years, the, what we anticipate needs, expenditures from the public safety sales tax.
Thank you. All right, does that finish your presentation?
That finishes the presentation. So at this point, this is a proposed thing, and we just wanted your feedback and comment and any question, other questions that you have.
My comment is, this is great. I mean, seeing the city build infrastructure, I think that's, that's an important responsibility that we have, so thank you again to the voters who have made all this possible, and I think it's incumbent on us now to deliver on what they've asked us to do, so. I think probably, my observation is that this is something that's going to unfold over several years. There may be economic cycles that come into play, and so I think this is a great, you know, looking this many years ahead, a great plan. It won't surprise me if there's changes along the way, but I think this is a good plan. Yes, Mr. Freeman.
Mr. Brady, what's our timeline for Riverview build-out for the union? Because that impacts our North Center Street project, and so, you know, when we drive by, the soccer fields are completely full all week long, except, well, maybe Sundays, too. But I've got a lot of people asking me about, hey, when are these soccer fields going to be moved over to another location? So I see the timeline here, which is fine-
Yeah.
But maybe a timeline for taking out the soccer fields or losing those fields?
Thank you, Councilman Freeman. So we are still, I think, moving forward with good progress with the developers, but we don't have a development agreement. And so when we bring that development agreement to you, it will, actually, we'll have some timelines, and that's one of the things we ask for the developer to give us, is some kind of sequencing of when things were going to happen. But most importantly, for your concern and for the soccer fields, there really is a question of when do we start construction? I think we've already informed parks, I think after May. I think we've told them not, I think that's the day, not to do the reseeding, that, May, but not program after May. So now, so that's kind of where we've put that, because Mark, you know, Parks and Recreation kind of needed to know so they can decide whether or not what's available. Our, probably our longest lead time to get that project done is what, and we're in the midst of it today, but as you know, is just the negotiations with the property owners. And that's, and we've already started that, even before we've come today, we've already started those discussions. We've shared appraisals, we've, you know, indicated to the owners are what our intentions are, made that very clear. So, you know, how long it takes to negotiate for that property, that's kind of where we're at right now. But we're actively pursuing the acquisition of that property, and once we acquire it, we'll begin design work immediately thereafter.
Thank you. Mr. Luna.
Mr. Brady, you know, this is an ambitious schedule that we have, and wonderful projects in the city of Mesa. Are we confident that what we're proposing in terms of budget's going to last the amount of years that we've projected out?
Say it again.
The amount of money that's-
Well, so what we were comfortable-
That just makes me nervous.
No, yeah, well, good, now there's two of us. So we're very comfortable, obviously, we're comfortable because of the bond authorization. We can deliver the projects, the capital. What we are concerned about, as we go through these years and we anticipate that we're, there's going to be some kind of a downturn in the economy, we don't know how, we're not sure how deep or how long. We have accommodated for a, what are you calling it, Candace? A economic, not recession, what was the word? Correction. Adjustment or correction, okay. In two years, year, yeah, year, two years. So we're, we've already anticipated that. Now, how fast we can come out of it? Now, we are concerned, as we get to the latter end of this, and we start delivering some of these big parks, athletic facilities, and libraries, that's going to put a lot of pressure on the budget in the future, and you, we'll give you those, you know, you'll get those from us, and you'll see what that looks like here in the next couple of months. And so we'll, you know, it may be that on the forecast, it doesn't look like it's possible, but every year, we'll just keep evaluating it and seeing how the economy's doing. You know, right now, for Mesa, we've been doing very well, you know, as far, last year was one of our best years, and we're still seeing continued growth in our tax base. So as long as, and that's coming from just, a lot of that's coming from growth, too, right? And so if we can, if that sustains itself at a reasonable period of 2% or 2.5%, you know, whether that can do that compounding every year, that's, you know, that's the, that's the tough question. So we'll, every year, we'll evaluate before we start doing design, before we start making those hard commitments on these projects that have significant operational maintenance obligations, we're going to talk about it with council. And we, and in the past, we have, with council's concurrence, deferred projects for a period of time to wait for better economic views and opportunities before we make those commitments. So we'll, this is the plan today. It's just a plan. We expect there'll be adjustments, but we'll keep busy with council every year and have that discussion.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Thank you, Scott. Next item on our agenda is item three, to acknowledge receipt of board minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you, Mr. Luna and Mr. Freeman. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Item four is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Anything you'd like to share, council?
I appreciate everyone's support in helping us get through another state of the city a couple of days ago. That took a lot of effort, particularly from the staff that, that I work directly with, so thank you. I thought it was a great opportunity for us to, much like we did this morning, lay out what is happening in the city and put it out there for public consumption and comment, so I really appreciate all the assistance that I received to, for that event the last couple of days. Anything else? Item five is the scheduled future meetings. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have a study session and council meeting Monday, February 11th, so we'll see you there. Also a reminder, this weekend is the Mesa Phoenix Marathon. There'll be road closures throughout Mesa on that, that day, that morning, from 5:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So we encourage residents, need help with rerouting, they can call 4-8-0, 6-4-4-4-8-8-2 and get information. I think there's a lot of flyers out there, and hopefully, if there's any, people need more information to get, call that number. Also a reminder that this Saturday, there's going to be a lot of puffing and puffing going on, because Councilman Luna is also having his Heart, Heart Your Health Expo, which is also on Saturday from 8:00 AM to noon at the Red Mountain Multi-Gen Center. So I encourage those who are not barricaded in their homes to go, go work out.
That's a good analogy.
You know, I think our community is starting to adjust to the marathon. I mean, but it is a great reminder, just to let everybody know, don't get mad, just plan ahead. The folks in Boston, just pull the barbecue out to the front yard and enjoy the day and spray their hoses of runners, so. Hope, I don't know, it'll take us a few years to get to that, but let's all just kind of be patient with each other this Saturday. All right, anything, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.